Thank you. I would like to call this meeting to order. It is, we are live. I'm live streaming and we welcome everybody to the meeting. And I believe we have all members of council except councillor Wynn, who happens to be unavailable today. So everyone else is present plus the staff. So we'll just ask if there's any disclosure or pecuniary interest. I'm sorry.
Hey, Martin, this is it today?
Yes, I'm sorry. Move the, would you read the motion for the addendum first?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Crevett, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that council approved the addendum to the agenda for Monday, August the 24th, 2020, being action item number three, Earth Corporation Annual General Meeting of Shareholders, and report ICS 2320, Central Ogden Control Group Update, Arenas and Parades.
Thank you very much. Call the vote.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevett?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn's absent, councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, is there any disclosure or pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'd like to declare conflict of interest on closed item session regarding earth. I'll not participate and leave the room.
Thank you. Well, we have a guest on today for our meeting and maybe Pat, you could show yourself. You don't look any different than you have all the time I've known you. You are remarkable. You hold your age extremely well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, Pat is retiring as of Wednesday of this week and he's been employed with the Central Ogden Planning Office and the former planning board for 44 years. In the last 31, he's been the director of planning. He led the development of the village of Port Stanley's last official plan. Plan included an economic development component that recognized the commercial fishing industry, importance of the harbor, and included policies supportive of municipal ownership of waterfront properties to provide the public with access to Lake Erie and Kettle Creek. It was during this time that the village of Port Stanley acquired Main Beach from private ownership. He led the development of Central Ogden's first official plan, bringing together the official plans from the former municipalities of Belmont, Port Stanley, and Yarmouth. Pat is a wealth of knowledge. I worked with Pat on the Central Ogden Planning Committee and on the Official Plan Committee with him. And even at that time, he was going through some interesting times because his wife was working in China. And I remember him traveling a bit and it was interesting. Now, Pat, I've known Pat or about Pat and experienced him for many years because Pat actually worked with Howard Gibson as his deputy planner back in the late 1970s when my husband, John Martin, was on the Yarmouth Township Council. So John knew Pat back in those days as well. So he's been around a long time. And we very much appreciate Pat, everything you've done for Central Ogden, your wealth of knowledge, your skills, and you certainly will be missed. And look forward to seeing you Wednesday at your retirement party. So thank you very much for all that you have done and we certainly will miss you.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. I appreciate that very much. It has been a long but fulfilling career. A lot of good memories, fond memories of some of the councils I've worked with, the five municipalities at one time, the large number of meetings I used to have to attend, et cetera. But I think you're, I'm leaving, you're well supported by the staff in the office. So I'm pleased that you still support the staff and I'm pleased that you're still participating in the Central Ogden Planning area.
Thank you. We very much value it. It is important to us.
Very unique. It's unique in Ontario. You should be very proud.
Oh, well, that's good to know. Thank you. And thank you very much for taking the time to join us today.
That's fine. I still have work to do. A few more days left.
As I say, you don't look any older than you did the last time I saw you or many years ago. You've held your age extremely well.
Well, thank you very much and I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, Pat.
Right. Well, I'll lead you to conduct your meeting.
Thank you. The adoption of minutes, would you read the motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that the minutes of the regular planning meeting of council dated Monday, July the 20th, 2020 be adopted.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevett?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no delegations. We're moving into correspondence for action. The Ferny Street Correspondence. Would you, I believe we have a motion. Would you like to read the motion and then we can discuss if there's any discussion?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by deputy mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Crevett, that correspondence received from Jacob J.W. Damster Learners dated July the 13th and August the 13th, 2020, and email correspondence received from Janet Oogan Kelly Law Firm respecting the proposed closure and transfer sale of Ferny Street. We received this information.
Any questions on this one? Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, the staff's understanding was it was the intention of council that if the three parties could come to some agreement, that would be brought forward for council's approval and consideration. That's what we understood was the case and the correspondence from Mr. Damster from July 13th. That turned out for whatever reason not to be the particular case. So that I think the message as staff understand it from council is that if the parties can come together with a resolution that they'd like to present to council, that's great. We'll consider that. But otherwise, if there is no resolution, then it's just costing money to keep pursuing this if the three parties can't come to some kind of compromise.
Yes, that was our understanding. That was our direction as a council to them. And it appears they do not have a full understanding or agreement between the three. So that's why we're just going to receive this correspondence today. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I have no problem receiving and filing this, but the part that bothers me, two parties, we have one party using our land as a driveway, which puts us under liability. So certainly it would be in our best interest to put a lid on that part. We have another party who've done a lot of work, initiated this, and certainly they have a wish to this. A party that's not willing, holding this whole thing up, I'm a little annoyed by this. Question to Mr. Leach, is this council in a position, can we make a motion to make a decision here?
Yes, Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, to deputy mayor Marks, the process to close is that council needs to authorize staff to give notice that council intends to close and sell a road allowance and how that intends to take place. And then we follow through, have it surveyed if necessary. And to do that, I guess what staff would caution is that if there isn't agreement, there's a potential for additional legal costs and costs for the municipality that we would incur. And it's not, although the municipality would like to convey the property, it's not absolutely essential that we convey the property so that council would have to decide whether it's actually in the public interest to convey it, if it's going to incur, you know, some legal costs because one of the parties is not satisfied.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Are we under a possible liability lawsuit? If someone on our property, on that laneway breaks a leg or whatever, are we exposed? Because that's the part that's bothering me.
Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, to deputy mayor Marks, I'm not sure I can answer that question. That would be more of a legal question, although I would note that almost every driveway in the municipality is on our road allowance or a county road allowance.
And I think as a council, we did make a decision before that this, they had to come to an agreement, the three parties, or we didn't want to hear about it anymore until they had come to an agreement because we were quite willing to do, to follow through if they can come to an agreement. But if not, it can just remain as municipal road allowance until that time.
Bill Fair?
Yes, Bill.
I would also like to add, if, I know we did exactly as you said and we're going to settle based on their proposal that they work out at their own expense. And I'm just wondering if they continue on with this continuous bickering, can we just add any legal costs that we incur to the value of the property for down the road when they ever do decide to come together?
Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, in response to councillor Fair's question, council can, in deciding to sell the property, can sell it for whatever value that it chooses. So if the council at that time feels that it needs to recover any additional legal costs, then it can seek to do so through the purchase price. Typically, when we close a road, it's pretty straightforward and we're just dealing with the survey costs, an appraisal if that's involved, and the legal costs basically for transferring the property. But in this particular case, there's been legal costs over and above what would be incurred with a simple transfer. So a future council could make the conveyance and closing conditional on the parties acquiring the property, paying those additional legal costs.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? So basically, our motion is to receive and file. Would you call the vote then? Diane?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevett?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
No.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to the, if you'd read the motion concerning the municipal affairs and housing correspondence from Stephen Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing?
Certainly, the motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Crevett, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, where his correspondence has been received from Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, respecting funding through the federal provincial safe restart agreement. And where said correspondence, said correspondence advises that under municipal operating funding, phase one, immediate funding for the municipal pressures, the municipality of Central Ogden will receive a payment of $344,700 allocated on a per household basis to support COVID-19 operating costs and pressures. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorize the Director of Finance Treasurer to sign the requested acknowledgement for receipt of these funds on behalf of the corporation.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I'm thankful that they're providing us some money because that certainly will help through this time. Allow us to do certain things as well.
Bill Fair?
Yes, go ahead, councillor Fair, and then councillor Rowe.
I'm just, I really welcome the funds. I'm just wondering if this is a one-time or, and if we incur a second phase of COVID, is that supposed to be included? So we would have to have some reserve for the potential second phase? Or is this just, we accept it now and it covers our costs up until now and the future will be dealt with if it comes?
Any response, Mr. Leach? Go ahead.
At this time, we, this is the funds that we've been allocated by the province. There's some suggested, suggestion that there may be additional funds coming in the future. But we're basically in a position, whatever we get from the province, we should accept and be thankful for, or anything will help us. You know, if there is a second round or second wave of COVID, whether there'll be additional funding, the province hasn't said one way or the other, to my knowledge, you know, what to provide, you know, any additional funds and whether it'll be to the same level of funding as what they have provided with this contribution of approximately $377,000.
Thank you. Councillor Rowe, you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It says in the letter itself within the agenda that yes, this is phase one funding, which is absolutely tremendous that they're providing that to the municipalities. But it also does say that they are considering phase two funding in there and we have to be able to submit a report or some type of information by the end of October. So my question is, obviously, I believe the direction first would be to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to sign this particular document to accept the funding. And then secondly, is council prepared at this point in time to also direct staff to submit something for the phase two? Or is the $350,000 that they're giving us sufficient for the COVID costs to date? Is that correct?
Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, in response to councillor Rowe, as I understand the question, essentially what council is giving authorization is for the Director of Finance Treasurer to sign the letter to allow us to access the funding, and I misspoke, it's $344,700. For, at this time, we continue to track our costs associated with COVID in terms of additional staff time or staff time related to the emergency, plus other additional costs from hard costs to lost revenue. So that if there is additional funding, we'll have that information available to support additional funding. We'll also have that data that we've collected or information that we've collected, costs and lost revenue to support the round one funding that they are providing, the province is providing.
Follow-up, Tom?
So just to be clear, in the memo, it says that you have to submit something by November the 6th in order to actually be even considered for a phase two funding application. So will this particular letter be also on a future agenda just to take that into account so we can make a decision?
Go ahead, Tom.
And Director of Finance may have some comments as well, but I don't think it's necessary to bring the letter back that staff know that we would be submitting that information to support an additional round of funding automatically. So I don't believe it needs to come back to council.
Ms. Nordeman, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I have a few comments on it. The province has been very clear about what's permitted and what's not permitted for this particular set of funding, this first phase. And we've essentially spent most of this first phase of funding already. We will have to justify any requests that we want to submit for a second round of funding. There will be a second round of funding anticipated and we'll have to justify any additional costs that we have at that time.
Thank you. Councillor Crevett, you wish to?
Yes, and just to follow up to that, on page three of that report from the minister, it asked for a template to be filled out by the October 30th deadline. That's where we can ask for the additional funding. So, and this council will have to pass a resolution seeking the additional funding. So I think we should be really following up on this to make sure we can take full advantage of the phase two funding by the October 30th deadline.
So noted, I would say. Any other questions or comments? I think none. I'll ask Diane to do the recorded vote.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevett?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. The third item is the Earth Corporation, their annual meeting, which is in September this year instead of May. It's usually the end of May, but due to COVID, it's now in September. And so we have to appoint a voting, a person to vote on our behalf of our shares. And that's what the motion's about. If you'd like to read the motion, Mrs. Wilson? Go ahead, yes.
Typically, it has been the mayor that's appointed. I've completed it. I just need direction on an alternate.
An alternate, yes. Is there someone who'd like to be the alternate in case I am unavailable?
Like to nominate the deputy mayor as the alternate?
Okay, I, Tom, would you, you would not have a vote as a member of the board already or not?
No.
Oh, okay. So deputy mayor, Tom Marks, has been nominated as the alternate to myself. Is there a seconder for that motion or is that agreeable? The seconder on your motion agrees? Okay, thank you. Councillor Cook, you wish to say something?
All right, I was just gonna second if nobody else did. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Going from member here, but I think late Friday, there was a discussion amongst the board members. This may actually be shuffled to 10 o'clock in the morning. Just, that's not a given yet. I know they were doing a poll to see rather than start at seven. Just look for that, I guess.
Okay, so it?
It may be a day meeting rather than?
It may be a day meeting rather than an evening meeting and that we'll know soon. But at the moment, so the motion would be, if you'd like to read the motion then?
So in addition, though, we do like to know?
Who's attending?
Yes, Earth likes to know who's attending.
Sir Rowe, anyone, it's a Zoom meeting. Anyone can attend that's on council. Councillor Rowe intends to attend. Councillor Crevett? Councillor Fair or councillor Cook? Do either one of you wish to attend?
No, I'm fine with not attending.
Thank you.
No, I won't be able to attend.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks?
With the absence of councillor Wynn, we should maybe?
Let her know and give her a chance to. Yes, so we will, Mrs. Wilson will contact councillor Wynn to make sure whether she wishes to attend or not. Go ahead and read the motion.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by deputy mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Crevett, that the council of the municipality of Central Ogden approve Mayor Sally Martin as the designated representative for the purposes of casting votes at the Earth Corporation Annual General Meeting of Shareholders, scheduled for Thursday, September the 10th, 2020, at 7:00 PM through Zoom software. And further, that council approved deputy mayor Marks as the alternate for said meeting.
Call the vote.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevett?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you. We're now looking at correspondence for information. And before I have Diane read the motion about accepting all of them, are there any that people wish to pull out or question? Councillor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was looking at number five and number seven. Number five being regarding long-term care homes. And number seven is the investment in rural broadband. The second one, number seven, we've seen a lot of them come through, I guess. So if there's also an opportunity to submit something on our behalf, so these are not continuously coming up on the agenda, is that an option as well?
Thank you. What, Mr. Leach, is that an option? Didn't we not do that, Diane?
Sorry. I will, through you to the rest of council and councillor Rowe, we have had, I will admit, we have had several of these that you have supported. And when you support them, correspondence goes back to that municipality and any other municipality. But if I'm understanding you correctly, are you thinking that if they come again, that you just, you want a blanket statement that council's supporting them?
Yes, we've done that before. We did that at least once before that I recall. I don't know if it has a specific name for it or not. But if that's something that is helpful, then we can certainly do that. I have no issue if they continue to show on the agenda. And I do understand that the correspondence does go out, so I'm not questioning that at all. It's just more of simplifying things, if that's possible.
I just, I guess I'm not aware of a procedure that we would do that.
That we would have a blanket.
Yeah, but I miss, we didn't want to comment on that.
Mr. Leach?
Madam, Madam Mayor, in response to councillor Rowe's question, certainly, I think we could screen the correspondence. So if it's just correspondence that says that a municipality is endorsing the resolution of another municipality, we can not take that to council. Where if it's a brand new resolution, it may be on the same topic of what we've already, council's already dealt with, but it could be a bit different than what was previously. We could still bring those forward to council, but for instance, like the Ambersburg correspondence where they're endorsing or just indicating they've endorsed the save Sarnia's motion, that kind of thing, we could not, we could not take to council or pull from the agenda, future agendas.
Just on that note as well, just for clarity, when it does say, you know, it's addressed to you and council, we put it on the agenda because it's addressed to you.
And don't get me wrong, I'm all for putting that sort of information on here, but I really was under the impression that an action was taken on an earlier item way back when because it kept coming up and coming up and coming up. So whatever that was or the reason for that was, if it's different than this, then that's totally fine.
Yeah, I believe at that time, instead of just supporting the motion, we actually made a motion, like ourselves made one and sent that in, supporting the rural broadband and that not just endorsing the motion that another municipality had made. So I think we've, in that sense, we've done, you know, we've done everything we could. And I don't know, you don't, I don't think we need to send another letter like that. We've already done that. I, we all certainly support rural broadband.
All right, thank you.
The one that, sorry, councillor Fair?
I wanted to very strongly endorse number eight, the farm tax review. I think that we're burdened with a lot. I think that the funding for farm taxes should be definitely reviewed to try and take as more of off the backs of rural homeowners or residential homeowners. So I would like that one to be strongly endorsed. And also, the letter number 11 from the speeding concerns, I'd like that to be considered. And I know the people in my area are looking at pursuing this further, finding something because in our area, I don't think it's acceptable that nothing has to be done on that.
Yes, I, number eight, I know we have supported that before. This has been a request many times before in the past concerning the farm tax and that we as rural municipalities, you know, it is very difficult for us compared to urban municipalities. As to the speeding concerns, I was very concerned at county council and I expressed my concerns there that this was happening and that we should be putting in at least the bollards like they have in Port Stanley. They tell us those are temporary and those will come out once the construction is done. And I said, well, the many of the citizens in Port Stanley like them and wish they would stay. So I know they have to come out in the winter, but I didn't get anywhere and they did not agree to do that at this time. So I am concerned as well. I was also concerned with the reported that 85% are going, you know, 12 to 13 kilometers an hour over the speed limit. That means 15% are going much higher than that. And so I just felt that with it being a residential street, it's, yes, it's a feeder road, but it's a residential street, that something should be done. So I hope your group there, maybe they can approach the county because it is a county road. It's a county decision. It's not Central Ogden's. We recommended to them that it should be done, but maybe your group should approach the county directly as well. Go ahead, councillor Fair. You muted yourself.
Also, when I'm talking to people in my area, the real concern is why on earth would they have made Centennial Ave narrower than Colter? I mean, it's just what, instead of traffic calming by making it narrow, they've made it. they've made it extremely dangerous. I mean, people so far, even, even losing their pets, pets is terrible. But so far, a few people have lost their pets because it's so close to the sidewalk. And all you have to do is have someone go through there on garbage day. You can see they don't even have room for people to get around the garbage trucks. It's just an awfully designed road.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I can't agree anymore. Certainly, that, that is a county road, but with the upcoming intersection construction on Elm Line and Centennial, a lot of traffic is going to be diverted onto Calder. And we have to look ahead. I'm certainly very much in favor of traffic calming. That's one of the biggest complaints I get, whether it be McBane Line over in that area. Get the complaints all over, but certainly I have to support Counselor Fair here big time. And it's only going to get worse with the construction and everyone racing down Calder.
So my understanding is then, Counselor Row, are you still wanting to withdraw the five for long-term care support? And seven? And Counselor Fair wants to withdraw number eight? Number 11, or, you know, to support number eight. Number 11, you're just expressing concerns. You're not asking for any difference there, or are you? Counselor Fair?
At this point, I'm just expressing concerns.
Thank you. All right, would you like to read the, the motion to take things lightly and removing five, seven, eight?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Kravitz, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that correspondence items number one through number 12, excluding number five, number seven, and number eight, be received as information and filed.
Would you call the motion?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries?
Motion for number five? You need a mover?
I have Counselor Row.
I'll second that.
Five and number seven.
And I can number five.
Counselor Kravitz, five, is a seconder. Someone like to second number seven, rural broad, or rural broadband? Deputy Mayor Marks? And number eight, which would be moved by Counselor Fair? Is there someone who'd like to second number eight? Pardon me, Counsel?
Yeah, I can.
Counselor Row, that's, thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead and read the motions.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Kravitz, that correspondence received the township of South Glengarry, the town of Ambersburg, the city of Port Holborn, and the town of Core Bay, respecting long-term care homes be endorsed.
Go ahead and call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries?
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that correspondence received from the town of Mono, supporting investment in rural broadband infrastructure be endorsed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries?
Final motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Fair, seconded by Counselor Row, that correspondence sent to the Honorable Doug Ford Premier from the Township of Huron Kinloss, requesting a review of the farm property tax class rate program be endorsed.
Call the vote. I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I just have a quick, I just want to clarify this in my mind. Is Counselor Fair, in what way does he want to change? I guess that's one being said on that.
I would like it changed so that farmers are paying more of their fair share than, than we are. I think the burden on the, on the residential people is, is getting too high. And I think it should reflect more of farmers paying more on their land.
That isn't, I don't think the gist of the, of the letter that we're endorsing, it's more that the province shouldn't be punishing rural areas versus urban areas, that they, they support. We have so many fewer properties, et cetera. I don't think it's about, because I certainly wouldn't agree with necessarily your, your position there. But this one is more about the amount of property taxes paid by rural municipalities versus urban and that the differences in those needs to be really looked at. We've run into problems before. It's, it's to do with the granting system, correct? The umph grants, et cetera. Mr. Leach, or how would you interpret this? Go ahead.
I, I can start again if Ms. Nordeman has any additional comments. She may wish to jump in. Historically, prior to all of the who, who does what changes that took place in the province over 20 years ago, municipalities received the full assessed value of farmland. And then the farmer was eligible for a rebate on those taxes from that, from the province. That, that changed at that time so that instead the farm value was based at, or the agricultural value of the property was based at 25% or whatever value was determined by the upper tier, but in that particular range. And the municipality was supposed to then receive through the, or the previous grants, similar compensation for the agricultural component. But it's not nowhere near equates to the full value if we receive taxes, if, if those farms were assessed at 100% of their, their value and that's the property tax revenue we received.
Bill Fair here.
Go ahead, Bill.
Deputy Mayor Marks asked what my ultimate feeling or, or what I would, what I would really like to happen in the end. And that's why I said that comment, because that is what I would like to happen in the end. But at this point, I want to endorse anything where they look at any of these.
It certainly was far, far fairer to municipalities when the, they were assessed at full value and then the farmer was able to get back their taxes on their farmland from the province and it didn't affect the municipalities. It was shifting it to the municipalities that has made it very difficult. And with the idea of the 25% was the maximum that the province allows municipalities to charge. The county have decided on 23%. That is still sitting for this year as well. So that's, I, I, this is, this endorsing this is really just taking a good look at how this is done. And I think I can certainly endorse it in, in having it look at how it's done.
And I also am fine with that. That's what I, my intent was. But again, when Deputy Mayor Marks asked what my ultimate goal would be, that would be my ultimate goal. But at this, this point, that's reaching beyond what this is talking about.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Marks?
And, and I certainly respect the opinion of Counselor Fair. I would remind him that as my loyalty lies in the farms are producing some food and if that appears to be a perk, would remind everybody, they don't grow a lot of food in GTA. We are, we are the ones that are feeding a lot of people. I don't consider that a perk, but everyone has an opinion. I certainly respect that. So I'll support this because I agree with Mayor Martin's interpretation of it.
Well, and I, I think with the farms too, we have to realize that farmers now, their land has gone up so much in value that they are paying a much higher tax than they were before because of the value. And yes, it's money, like it's highly valued, but they can't gain anything from unless they sell their land. And so it's, you know, we're not trying to discourage farmers from farming. We don't want them to sell their land for other things because that's important. So anyway, I think, is there anyone else who has any comments they want to make before I call the vote? Counselor Kravitz?
Oh, I'd just like to say that I support in principle what the township of Huron is asking for. They are asking for a, a fairer approach to the farm tax, the 25%, getting some of the money from the GTA area and having the province administer. So I would support the motion that is on the table here, to that extent only.
Thank you. And that's what this letter is all about. Would you call the vote then, Counselor, or sorry, Mrs. Wilson?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
She carries.
Thank you. Moving into reports then, the Central Ogden Planning Office. The first one, CEP 1920. This is concerning the Jaclyn Farm Phase Four.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Kravitz, seconded by Counselor Row, that report CEP 1920 be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to permit semi-detached residential development on lands which may be legally described as part of Block 48, registered Plan 11M 219, geographic township of Yarmouth, now municipality of Central Ogden. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? Seeing and hearing none, I'll ask you to call the vote.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And CEP 3120, Village of Port Stanley, concerning Francis Street.
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Row, seconded by Counselor Kravitz, that report CEP 3120 be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw in support of the proposed residential use on lands located at 263B Francis Street, which may be legally described as Plan 49, part of Lot 12, geographic village of Port Stanley, now municipality of Central Ogden. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? If not, call the vote, please.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. CEP 3220, Fruit Ridge Line.
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Kravitz, seconded by Counselor Row, that report CEP 3220 be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to satisfy conditions of a set, of a residence surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at 42057 Fruit Ridge Line, which may be legally described as concession for North Part Lot of One, geographic township of Yarmouth, now municipality of Central Ogden. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
Thank you. You may notice that we haven't got dates for the public meetings because, Mrs. Wilson, would you like to just explain that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, through to council and the public. We will be scheduling these definitely for the September 28th planning meeting, but we just didn't insert that. And of course, there will be time scheduled because it will be, again, be by Zoom.
Thank you. Would you call the vote on this one?
Just, just, Bill, just one question. I'm just, it describes that it says that it fronts onto Fruit Ridge Line and also onto Sparta Line. Does it actually go all the way across to Sparta Line?
No. Mr. McClure? Not that I'm aware of, but-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, it does not.
No. So it's just on, it's on the south side of Fruit Ridge Line along Malora Road there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
She carries.
Thank you. The next motion on CEP 3320, this is lot, removal of part of lot control on Compass Trail.
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Kravitz, that report CEP 3320, application for removal of part lot control to 39 and 11M 241, file number 34TC 1901, Compass Trail, Village of Port Stanley, be received.
Any questions or concerns on this one? Seeing none, would you call the vote?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair? Counselor Fair?
You're muted, Counselor Fair.
Sorry, I'm having, I was having some trouble with my computer here. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carries.
And the final planning one, CEP 3520. This is another one to do with the Jaclyn Farm Phase Four.
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Kravitz, seconded by Counselor Row, that report CEP 3520 be received and that council support in principle the proposed draft plan of subdivision, file number 34TC 2001, on lands owned by Prespa Construction. May be legally described as part of lots one and two, range South Edgeware Road, part of Block 48, reference Plan 11M 219, municipality of Central Ogden. And that the CEO clerk be directed to prepare draft comments on behalf of the municipality of Central Ogden, respecting technical, financial, and administrative matters relative to draft plan of subdivision 34TC 2001. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54406 as amended.
Any questions or concerns on this one? Not, call the vote, please.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Kravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you. Now to the chief administrative officer reports. And this is to do with the five-year review of our official plan. Mr. Leach, do you have anything you want to say before we?
Madam Chair, essentially, this is to move the official plan review to the next step. We were basically on hold that the staff from the planning office had done a policy audit of the existing official plan a couple of years ago. As councilor may recall, shortly after you came into office, there was a letter that came out from Stephen Clark to municipalities, basically asking municipalities to put a hold on official plan reviews until the provincial policy statement, a new one was issued. That came out in the springtime, the new provincial policy statement. So we're now able to, you know, move forward with our official plan review. We're required to do so under the Planning Act. Dylan is con, you know, contacted the municipality through its work on the Harper Secondary Plan. City of St. Thomas is in a similar position to do a review. Dylan did the original plan for Central Ogden that was referenced earlier during the comments from Mr. Keenan. So staff are recommending that we do accept Dylan's proposal to carry forward with the subject that the city of St. Thomas council also accept the proposal for the comparable work because there is some economies of scale associated. If St. Thomas chooses not to accept the proposal, then we'd have to come back to council to look at alternatives.
Listen, I will say Dylan Consulting was the firm that did the original official plan that we worked with for many years when I was on the committee. Any questions here? Counselor Row?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one, simple one, I guess, to follow up on what Mr. Leach had just commented on. Is there any, or do you anticipate any reason that St. Thomas would not be participating in this? And just from my own information for clarity, do, does that same planning office support other municipalities or just Central Ogden?
Just the city and Central Ogden. It used to do South Old as well. When I was first on it, it had South Old and then they withdrew. Jim, do you wish to respond to that? You're muted, Jim, if you wish to respond.
Sorry, your worship. Can you repeat the question?
Councillor Rowe was asking whether we anticipated whether City of St. Thomas likely will also use Dylan or not. That was the basic of your questions, correct, Councillor Rowe? Yes. Do we anticipate St. Thomas will likely do it?
That was something that staff will be taking to council at one of its meetings in September. The basis of the pricing from Dylan is, was, I believe, that they do the work for both so they could economies of scale and use travel times to be they could cover both municipalities in the same day and that sort of thing. So yes, we will be taking forward that recommendation to City Council.
I think she was just wondering if you anticipated St. Thomas probably would support it, but they did do the original one for both of us, correct?
That is correct. And I'm not anticipating, I just, I really can't speak for St. Thomas Council, so.
I agree.
We're certainly hoping that they'll, they will accept the recommendation to go forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not, would you call the vote?
Diane?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitz?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're working under the Director of Infrastructure and Community Service, and the first one is the Mortenson Drain Petition.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy, sorry, moved by Councillor Cravitz, seconded by Councillor Rowe, that council appoint Brandon Woodner, Spirit Associates Limited, to prepare a report under Section 4 of the Ontario Drainage Act for the petition land of Mike Mortenson, as per report ICS 1620.
Any questions or concerns on that? Seeing and hearing none, would you call the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitz?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next one then is the Port Stanley pedestrian crossover. Read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council approve the location of the proposed signalized pedestrian crossover in Port Stanley as per report ICS 2020.
Questions or concerns? Councillor Cravitz?
Just for clarity, can somebody explain the exact location of this crosswalk? It's not very clear in the report.
If you, if you look at the second attachment, it shows a better map. It's going from the Legion's little park area across, I, I was concerned and asked about that this morning because to me would have made more sense to be closer to the bridge, the other side of Carlo. But they, anyway, Mr. Brooks can certainly explain to you why it is where it is. Can you see that? Did you get that attachment?
Yes.
That make it any clearer?
But it doesn't really show our roads on it. That's just a map or an indication showing how the crosswalk should be constructed.
But they chose Carlo Road and Bridge Street. The second attachment, which is a photograph. It's an aerial photograph.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I got that now.
Yeah, the other one was hard to determine. Mr. Brooks, would you like to explain why the location was chosen?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The location shown in the drawing just west of Carlo Road on Bridge Street was chosen to pick up pedestrians crossing from north to south or south to north between the two intersections of Carlo Road and Bridge and Bridge and Colburn. There are pedestrians crossing all the way through that location, and this spot was chosen because sightlines are clear through here. It's west of the intersection. If you look on the north side of Bridge Street, you can see that our sidewalk actually ends at the entrance to the LCBO there, so that ends the sidewalk there. So we thought in talks with Dylan Consulting that that would be an ideal location to put, to put the crosswalk there.
Any other questions or concerns from anyone? Deputy Mayor Marks?
Just looking ahead, Port Stanley has benefited this year with three new crosswalks and two sets of signals due to the construction of the bridge. And perhaps the mayor and myself could take a bow because that's a pretty good deal for us. And certainly appreciate the cooperation of the rest of county council. That's, that's probably the deal of the year. I you know, always there on the side of safety, so any crosswalk certainly in favor of. I'm looking ahead at the two signal crossings. I think the public are getting used to them. And they're temporary. We've, we've actually had the discussion with the county. They're willing because it's almost the same cost to leave the crosswalks. We're going to get the benefit of them becoming permanent. Crosswalk or the, the signals, if they take them down, I have actually asked Mr. Lima, and I think they would again consider it, there'd be some cost, but maybe that could be a big benefit and we get a couple of signals. Certainly we're going to grow into it whether we need it or not. I'm wondering, you know, if they get this bridge done by the first of the year, start doing crossing again, are they going to be starting taking down? Are we prepared? Do we have any funds if they say, okay, you can have it for X number of dollars? Wondering if this money might be better in our back pocket. I'm just throwing that out for discussion. I'm not I'll live with whatever decision, but I think those, the public are starting to accept, expect that the lanes are widened. There's great improvements down there in traffic flow. I'd hate for us to lose those two lights if there was an opportunity for us to keep them.
The, the one problem, I think Deputy Mayor Marks, that Mr. Lima expresses, those are temporary lights so that you'd have to put in permanent lights? I don't know. That was, that was what he said at the time.
But he certainly agreed, and I can speak for him, that the public are being trained. And maybe it, it'd be cheaper to keep them in some way, to make them permanent. And I'd hate to lose that opportunity. So I'm just throwing that out for council.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes, just to comment on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too agree that the stoplights might be beneficial in the long run for the village. They have proved very successful. As far as sort of the budget for either one of those in the 2020 budget, this crossover that's on the agenda for today is in the 2020 budget, and I would suggest when we get to the 2021 budget that we talk about, you know, what it would take to keep the stoplights there. I have no idea what the cost would be, and I too have contacted Mr. Lima on the same topic. So I, I think it's, it's perfect for future discussion for this particular one. I think, I think the crosswalk is very warranted in, in that location simply because there are so many people going multiple directions there. I don't know that you're going to get all of the people crossing to cross at this crosswalk, but to provide that safety to those that do, I think is important.
Okay, and that, that was my concern because with the tourist booth over on the other corner, I had thought, you know, coming from the main part of the village across there was, was a better spot. But as Mr. Brooks said, that there, there is a driveway into the train station area, et cetera, that would have to go around and it might block the bridge, you know, if the bridge, you know, if the traffic backed up onto the bridge or whatever. Councillor Rowe?
That's just to add to that, my understanding is that if it was actually on the other side of the intersection, it's, that's the county road, so then they would need county, we would need county approval to do that. Having it on the west side of that particular intersection is a municipal road so that the staff and Mr. Brooks can do as they see fit.
Okay. Any other comments?
Is that correct?
Yes.
If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitz?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is the Stanley berm sitting areas or pods. Okay, there were two motions, whether we accept this. This is a request from the Port Stanley Village Association to put stone, armor stone seating pods that will be COVID-19 compliant as far as distance out on the berm. They're temporary. They can be moved at any time. They're paying entirely for them. As Mr. Brooks put in his, the only thing that we'll be doing is maybe putting out a garbage can or two and, and dumping that. But they would like to see, they feel that there are people that like to walk out there and would appreciate seating areas, and they would like to do something and have raised the money already for this. So your thoughts on which motion? Do we have any signatures on either motion? No signatures on whether we support them or don't. So thoughts from the council, please.
Bill Fair?
Yes, Councillor Fair.
Yes, I completely support it. I think that's, it's a great move. I know they're temporary, so they can be moved. But we've got the berm there. We, our long-term plan says 70% public. I think we should not wait for down the road. I think we should start using it for the public now. And this is one step in the right direction. It's a program that's being paid for by the Port Stanley Village Association. They're supporting it. I, I support it, and I think it's great to get some, some traffic down there, make it more comfortable for people to enjoy that area of the berm. So, so I definitely would endorse that motion.
Would you like to move the motion then?
I would.
Okay.
I will, I will. Yes.
As the mover. Thank you. Is there a second or for that motion? Councillor Rowe is seconding that motion. That's to support this. He's going in. Councillor Rowe?
I also just add a comment, Madam Mayor, is great that it's on the berm, but if there is any option to put one or two in Hoffus Park, it's right there. It's kind of been there longer than the berm has. So depending on how many stones, I suppose, that they can purchase with the funds that they have, if staff sees fit, it would be great if there could be some in either location.
Mr. Brooks, would that be a possibility of you speaking with the Village Association? They've, in the diagram, they're proposing six. Even putting one or two of those over in Hoffus Park and say four on a berm might be a nice idea. I don't know. Do you want to approach that with them?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to work with the Village Association to place a sitting area out on Hoffus Park if that's council's wish. I, I don't have any issues with it.
Thank you, because they are temporary that these, and we're asking them to mulch under them, et cetera, so that maintenance will be very minimal. Yes. Sorry, Mr. Cravitz.
I was down to Port quite a few times on the weekend just to watch the area, and I didn't really notice that many. Like, at two of the five times I was down there, there was absolutely nobody on the berm other than probably 2,000 seagulls and a flock of geese. Is there some other program, like a tree planting program or something else that could be done? I don't think these stones would be used that much other than by the birds. I got an issue with these at this time. It's, it'd be hard for them to keep the rocks clean, and we're going to be creating extra work for our Parks Department, putting garbage pails out there, re-mulching every year. There's extra work being done with servicing the area, and I, I don't know. I don't know if there's something else that I, I have a hard time supporting these pods in their location. It'd be nice if they were closer to the parking area where people could actually use them. There's some stones located at the south end of the parking lot on the berm right now, and they are actually used, but to be all out into the middle of the berm, I don't think they're going to get used. I think a better thing that if the Port Stanley Village Association could do would be to promote a walking path through there first, to try to get a destination to go to these pods. I don't know if there's, if there's more thought should be put into the berm on the long-term use of it rather than just starting to put stuff out there.
Well, I think.
My concern.
Yeah, I don't think that they're, they're making it temporary. They know that they are temporary, that they can be moved at any time or removed completely or whatever, or the stones used elsewhere. I have been down several weekends too where there have been people on towels sitting on the berm, quite a few. When the beaches are very crowded, quite a few people go out on the berm on their towels. So I, you know, it, it is, they're suggesting places where people like to meet. There are a fair number of people who walk the berm on a regular basis. Mr. Leach, you had something you wish to say?
Madam Mayor, I did want to indicate that we're working towards approval of the Harbor Secondary Plan, and hopefully that's, that's possible. Come back to council in the very near future. The other thing that was identified through our strategic plan was the actual development of a waterfront master plan for the public space on the, the berm and on the west side of the harbor, where we actually designed the specific features and come up with a timeline to develop that area for the parkland and public space. So its staffs hope that this fall will come back to council with like the terms of reference for a consultant to do that work, for council to review and approve, and then we would go out for a request for proposals for consultant to undertake that project, which will involve public engagement because it's such a significant piece of property. And that's where we hopefully put, you know, the specifics down about where the specific features the public wants to see on the berm, you know, where paths and those features would be laid out, how they could be funded, and the timeline. It's a long-term plan. It would be a long-term plan for those features to be constructed.
With, with the current seating pods that they're requesting, they did specifically raise the money for that. That's what they told people they were going to do with the money. And so they specifically, they feel they cannot use the money for something else without going back to every donor, and they had significant donations for these. And lammers, they have approached lammers. Lammers are willing to do it. They, they've arranged all the financing, et cetera. It's just our, whether, you know, we're in agreement, and I don't see any harm whatsoever in allowing these to go out there at this time. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I have to agree. This is a generous offer, and you don't want to blunt the enthusiasm of volunteers, so, and it's whether it ends up being permanent, it certainly can be changed if we put it in a better place. Certainly, you know, tip of the hat to the volunteers and it's generous gesture.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I would ask you to call the vote. I'm sorry, the motion first and then the vote, yes.
Yeah, the motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councillor Fair, seconded by Councillor Rowe, that council approve the installation of sitting pods at the Port Stanley berm as recommended by the Port Stanley Village Association, and further that said installation be funded by the monies raised through the PSVA fundraising efforts and the eco class at the Kettle Creek Public School as per report ICS 2020.
Yes, Councillor Cravitz?
I'd just like to say, I'd like to see the plan done before we start doing stuff, before we vote on it, but let's go ahead and vote. I'll vote on it.
Okay, and the eco class, I know what part of the idea was that they might be able to hold some outside classes out there, and that's why they're supporting it. Okay, call the vote.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitz?
Oh.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Rowe?
Yes.
And Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is the report on Erie Street. So something that came to us about a year ago with concerns. Mr. Brooks, do you wish to speak to this at all before we read the motion?
Sure, Madam Mayor. There was a report taken last year in regards to an area at the west, the very west end of Erie Street in Port Stanley. The road allowance continues beyond the curve in the road where Erie Street turns into Sidham and goes up a gravel hill up to, I believe there's two residences up on the top of the hill. A couple of years ago, the operations department put tar and chip down there. The tar and chip have started to unravel, and when we get a, when we get a rain, we have gravel that starts to accumulate down the bottom of the hill on Erie Street. So the report went to council last year, and at that point, it was decided that we would do nothing and we would increase our volume of sweeping down in that area. Over the last year, it's become a bit of a nuisance for the operations department to try and keep on top of sweeping that area every time we've got, we get a rain and gravel accumulates. We have a little bit of money in our hot mix paving budget. money in our hot mix paving budget this year, and we believe for $14,500, we can get that area paved so that the gravel accumulation at the bottom of the hill goes away.
Thank you, any questions from, sorry, any member of council? Seeing none, would you read the motion, Diane?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks. That council approved the paving of the west end of Erie Street in Port Stanley at a cost of $14,500 plus HST, and further, that said expenditure be funded from the 2020 hot mix paving budget as per report ICS 2220.
Thank you, call the vote.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
No.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
This next one on the arenas and parades has been, our emergency control group have discussed this for quite a bit. And I think even before we do it, Mr. Brooks, do you have the link that you can play the video? So that they can see how, if we open, how we're going to go about it?
Yes, I'll attempt to share my screen and play the video for everyone on here, just let me know if there's any issues with it.
Okay, this is a video that was done by the, by Tecumseh concerning how arenas will be used.
Complex and arena.
Sorry, I'm just having.
It's all right. We heard some sound but only saw you.
Okay, so you can see the screen now?
We can see the screen.
We are excited to announce that the arena will be operating under the Stage Three guidelines starting Friday, August 14. Let me explain what you can expect when you attend the Tecumseh Arena under Stage Three protocols. Players, skaters, coaches, and parents should arrive 20 minutes before their scheduled ice time and go to the doors located on the west side of the building. It is here that your team representative will conduct COVID-19 pre-screening questions for all individuals that will be entering the facility. Everyone entering the Tecumseh Arena will be required to wear a mask. Please note that food and beverages are not permitted in the facility and the vending machines and canteen are closed. Groups will be permitted to enter the building 15th scheduled ice time. Once your group enters a building, the doors will be locked and will remain locked.
Yes.
No one will be permitted into the building after the doors have been locked. Players and skaters must arrive fully dressed in their equipment.
We're just seeing a frozen picture.
One parent or guardian will be permitted to attend the ice time as respect those younger players that require assistance to tie their skates. There will be an area outside of ring A for this to be done. As parents and guardians will not be permitted in the dressing rooms. The arena dressing rooms will be available for players and skaters to use to put on their skates, but the showers will not be available. While in the dressing room, skaters and players are asked to respect the dressing room capacity limits and stay within the designated seating area. Players may remove their face masks only after their helmet is on. Skaters and players will access the rink through the designated hallway located off of the dressing room hallway. Spectators will be permitted to watch in the designated area. Important that spectators maintain social distancing protocols within the rink and lobby areas. Floor markers and signage have been installed to ensure individuals may stand or sit. As the heaters will not be on, spectators are encouraged to bring a jacket or blanket. Players and skater water bottle filled with water and labeled with their name. After your scheduled ice time, players will return to the dressing rooms using the designated hallway located at the south end of the rink. Once again, while in the dressing room, skaters and players are asked to respect the dressing room capacity limits and stay within the designated seating areas. Players and skaters are to remove skates and helmets, put their face mask back on, gather up their personal items, and then leave the dressing room while still in their equipment to make their way to the exit of the building located on the east side doors of the lobby. We want to thank everyone in advance for your cooperation as we get back to the ice under Stage Three guidelines. We look forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, I'm, I'm assuming we can send the link to people so they can watch it, it didn't come through, it didn't move through the thing as well as it did when I watched it on the link, but it's just to give an idea that if we agree to open, we will do a video similar to that, one for Belmont and one for Port Stanley. So that all people, all players coming can see that ahead of time, know exactly what to expect when they, if we go with this, so question, do you want to read the motion first of all?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Krebbit, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks. Council accept the recommendation of the Central Algon control group to reopen both the Belmont and Port Stanley arenas. And further, that council accept the recommendation of the Central Algon control group to not consider any requests for parades for the remainder of 2020 as per report ICS 2320.
Questions? Not hearing or seeing any, would you re, do the vote, please?
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any financial ones, so we go now to fire, rescue, the monthly alarms report.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Rowe. That report FS 1120 monthly alarm activities report July 2020, we received this information.
Thank you, any questions? Yes, Deputy, I'm sorry, I'm looking at both of you through the screen, I see Deputy Mayor Marks and Counsel Krebbit at the same time because of the Lexiglas, go ahead.
The question I got is, on the parking tickets, there's 284 parking tickets? That seems rather high, just wondering, is there any indication where they are, or do we have to add some parking locations in this report? Someone could explain the parking issue?
You're, you're in the.
We're currently on the alarms report.
Yeah, you're in the building, monthly building report, we're in the fire alarms.
Okay.
It's next.
It's coming up, I wondered when you said that, and I don't have that on my.
Are we parking in a firehouse?
No, this is the fire alarms.
Okay.
Any questions, and, and it was, no, yesterday with the fire there on the tugboat, that was something that is of great concern to us, but any questions on these reports from Chief McDonough? For the July? If not, I'll call the vote, please.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and now we're on the monthly building report for the Director of Asset Management Development Services. Now you have a question.
Yes, I just, the question was just the 284 parking tickets, that just seems extremely high. Just wondering if there's any indication where they're coming from or why there's so many parking tickets?
Baron, would you like to respond to that?
Madam Mayor, through you to Counsel Krebbit, that number is a little bit higher than normal, but not much. Predominantly Maine Beach Parking Lot, the Boat Launch Parking Lot, as well as the, what we call the old Ballpark Parking Lot. Make up probably 65% of those, those tickets. Another 15% are elsewhere, and no parking zones on some of the side streets. And then approximately 20% of those parking tickets are down on West Edith Cavell Boulevard by Erie Rest Beach. That's still a problem area for, for illegal parking.
Yeah, thank you, just in that area too, I just had somebody call me about the parking on the north side of that West Edith Cavell as well. It's full of parked cars at all times as well, and it makes it one lane down there, just wondering if we should do something about that parking, on-street parking there. I, I don't know if it's an issue or not. If Chief McDonough was here, I'd ask him if there's a problem, but.
Mr. Baron?
I, I can advise that we've had issues getting service vehicles like garbage trucks through that area, so we asked the bylaw officers to go down and issue tickets to, we can't tow them, but we can definitely issue a ticket. If they're blocking traffic.
Because there's no parking on either side of West Edith Cavell, I believe. Any other questions on this building? Is any other aspect to the monthly building report? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Call the vote?
I'm sorry, you've read it, call the vote, please.
Yeah, Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thought when we jumped right to Dennis that we hadn't read it, sorry. Okay, bylaws. Do you like to read the first motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Rowe. That bylaws 2404, sorry, excuse me, bylaws 2504, 2505, 2506, 2507, 2508, and 2509 be taken collectively.
Although, call the vote then, please.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Next motion on the bylaws?
Next motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counsel Rowe. That bylaws 2504, 2505, 2506, 2507, 2508, and 2509 be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote?
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Final motion on the bylaws?
Final motion, Madam Mayor, moved by Counsel Krebbit, seconded by Counsel Rowe. That bylaws 2504, 2505, 2506, 2507, 2508, and 2509 be read a third time and finally passed.
Well, I was just going to mention the Norton one, I mean, that is, it, it did not surprise me in the slightest because they were never able to find a planner, and so it didn't surprise me coming through with that one in support of it being residential lot, so. Anyway, go ahead and call the final vote, please.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you, we have no public notice and no resolutions. Under new business, we agreed when we met with the City of St. Thomas recently that we would set up a joint Business Park Initiative Steering Committee. With, I believe, the mayor and two other members of council, is that correct, Mr. Leach from both councils? And then whatever staff are required, so we don't have to name the staff, it's just whatever staff they need to pull in at the time, so. Do you have volunteers yet for that committee? No, okay. This is the joint one to look at, came out of the cannabis meeting. Deputy Mayor Marks, you'd like to sit on the committee?
I certainly would.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Marks, this one, who else would like to sit on the committee? Thinking Counsel Fair, you may wish to because it's going to be certainly in your area, but I don't, I don't know, you don't have to by any means, we want someone who's interested.
Oh, I was, I was going to, to volunteer, I just didn't want to go in and if anyone else had wanted to go in, but I would really like to because as you said, it is in my area and quite closely associated with St. Thomas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who had wanted to be on the committee? Okay. Would you read the motion then, Mrs. Wilson?
Madam Mayor, I do require a move and a second.
I'm sorry, we require a move and a, and a seconder.
I'll move that.
All right, Counsel Krebbit and Counsel Rowe?
The motion reads, moved by Counsel Krebbit, seconded by Counsel Rowe. That council approved the establishment of the City of St. Thomas and Municipality of Central Algon Joint Business Park Initiative Steering Committee. And further, that the following members of council and municipal staff will be appointed to said joint committee. Mayor Sally Martin, Deputy Mayor Marks, and Counsel Bill Fair.
Call the vote?
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel Krebbit?
Yes.
Counsel Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, that is, is there any new business that anyone has to bring up?
Counselor, Counsel Fair?
Go ahead, Counsel Fair.
We have a real problem with skate park and different other bylaw enforcement issues for, for my ward. I know, I've heard many times that bylaws are complaint-driven, well, for goodness sakes, we've, we've had people park a trailer on McBane, blocking vision for people, it's been hooked up with power and so on, it sat there for a couple of weeks. We've had people parking their construction equipment on the road, actually dumping gravel on the road, I had to get them to move that. I did get ahold of the bylaws officer, and this was back prior to COVID and also last fall. After numerous calls, then we got, said, oh, you're supposed to fill out a form. Well, by the time you fill out the form, we'll have the second generation of lawbreakers there. Also now in the park, we supposedly have bylaws that the park is not supposed to be used between sundown and sunup. The other night I was, went out there at 10 o'clock at night, people were skateboarding out there, it seems the parents don't seem to have much control over a lot of these youth. We have no real enforcement there, and by the time we complain, it'd be the next day or two days later. We also, after I was there the other night, people, other people came back. Last, just now, I got another notice that they were doing fireworks there last night. I would like some way of giving the public full access or know how to deal with this. Whether, I guess the first line would be parents, but do we have bylaws officers that could actually come out and respond in a timely manner? Do we call the police? I'd like direction given through our, let's talk Central Algon or somehow so people clearly know what they can do, because this is just not acceptable, this rowdy behavior that's going on. And like I say, there's nothing timely about responses. We have to do something that protects these people, we've got noise bylaws. Basically, what we have is a, a problem with bylaw enforcement.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I have to agree 100%, I get calls all the time bullying at the skate park, hopefully maybe some cooler weather and kids go back to school might help it. And I have discussed this with Counsel Fair. It's, that, that area is a big area, and it's a very active Lynn Hurst community group, and they're actually members of, are on both sides over on South Side. I believe Southold is community policing, and I would, and I brought this up before, I certainly, Port Stanley and Belmont have had community policing for years and years, and many times for good reason bragged about the successes, and I think that's what we need is perhaps. And I think that's what we need is, perhaps we could partner with, with Southold. I'd certainly like us to look into it. Counselor Fair's concerns are genuine, stopping Lynn Hurst for items, hearing from it all the time, and it's, there's frustration, they don't know who to call. So, I, support, looking into it, the people, they need someone to talk to.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Baron, go ahead.
With respect to noise after working hours, the OPP is under contract with the municipality, and they will respond to noise complaints or concerns about rowdiness in the, anywhere in Central Algon if they're called, and that's subject to them being able to respond, and they have to prioritize that. The issue that we have is that, and it even happened as recent as a week ago on the weekend, where someone posts something on Facebook or messages us on Facebook Messenger at, you know, 7:05 complaining about noise. Well, we don't monitor that. And luckily, that night, I did respond back to that person, and they were advised to contact the OPP, and they chose not to. So, you know, if, if the direction that staff have been working on is based on previous direction from council that we deal with bylaw complaints on a reactive basis, not proactive, if council wishes us to take more of a proactive approach, that's going to require increased staffing, especially if it's in the evening, and there'll be other items that we'll have to deal with as far as resources as well. So if council wishes to investigate that and report back, we're happy to do that, but that's going to come at a considerable cost.
Mr. Baron, the bylaw, the extra bylaw enforcement officers we hired this year, basically because of the beach and the COVID situation, when will they be finished?
They're typically finished at Labor Day.
Counselor Fair?
Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
I think we have to do something more proactive, even if it does cost us some money, because soon it'll be safety, that we're going to have people going out and dealing with it themselves if it gets worse. And I know I shouldn't have to go out there at 10 o'clock at night to tell people to leave the park, but I'm just wondering, could we put something together for our people to show the lines like, you know, first, first level of contact is this, and with the numbers and so on? So they've got a template on how they can react so that they can know the approach that they, they can take. And if we have to do some more proactive bylaw enforcement, I think it's something that we're going to have to bite the bullet and do it. We just, we have bylaws, but they don't seem to be enforced. Even a month ago, I know the, the mayor said that someone had been bitten on the beach by an off-leash dog. Well, there's not supposed to be dogs on the beach in the first place. I, I'm sure back in the days of Bruce Munger, there wouldn't have been dogs walking around if there were rules against it.
To, just so you're aware, that was a private beach area, it wasn't our public beach.
I was not aware of that. I thought it was the public beach.
No. Just, the, the, as far as responding, our noise bylaw, we have contracted the OPP to respond to noise bylaw complaints. So that's what people have to do, and they all seem reluctant to call the OPP, but that's the way it, it has been set up. So I, I'm quite happy to, I think it, we can certainly put more of it, you know, on our, let's, our CE buzz and Facebook page and all those things. But I, you have to realize too, Counselor Fair, we met with the people of that area, they requested the skateboard park for that park. It seems interesting now that they're complaining that they have it and that it's a major problem, but they, they did ask for that. When we met with them, we had public meetings there on-site where they came and chose what they wanted in their park. Mr. Leach? And then Deputy Mayor Marks?
One of the, Madam Mayor, one of the frustrating things with like Facebook we've faced is, we'll tell people through Facebook, if you have a problem, whether it's a bonfire on the beach or whatever, this is what you need to do. And then we get people arguing with us, saying, we're not going to do that, you should deal with it. And we say, well, we have a fire department. Or, you know, one of the, you know, responses on Facebook Messenger I responded to, and maybe it's the same one Mr. Perrin's referring to, but the person was instructed by Mr. Perrin to phone the OPP, and the person said, no, I'm not going to do that. Well, about an hour later, I saw it, and I responded back to the person to say, the OPP are contracted, we're paying the OPP hundreds of thousands of dollars, and part of that is to enforce our noise bylaw. They're the people that your taxes are going towards enforcing this. So if you have a noise complaint, please call the OPP. But you get that pushback from people saying, we don't want to bother the OPP, but the municipality's asking, want to help yourself, this is what you need to do. So it gets very frustrating, and watching the, the public comments on the open burning on beaches, people were fighting with each other on that page, and we can't control the posts, aside from posts that are clearly crossing a line. But I don't know if it's the temper of the times, but it's frustrating when we're trying to enforce things, and we don't get the public's cooperation, too. Or they, as Mr. Perrin says, thinks they throw it out on Facebook, and that's the complaint that we're supposed to be having staff 24 hours a day reading Facebook posts in order to, to respond. Just, we can't certainly do that unless council wants to pay somebody, you know, to monitor Facebook 24 hours a day.
Deputy Mayor Marks, you wish to speak?
Well, do we agree that we get value for the community policing in Port Stanley and Belmont? If we do, why would that model not perhaps work here and partner with Southold? Perhaps the reluctance going to the police may they'll go to committee members and volunteers. I agree with Counselor Fair, there is a problem. I don't have the answer, but.
Counselor Rowe, you wish?
Just to respond to that, Madam Mayor, if there's a problem, yes, the OPP should be called, and I get the hesitation from some of the residents as well, but I would still encourage them to call the OPP first and foremost. The municipality could certainly, you know, put up some direction, you know, do this, do this, do this on Facebook or whatever the media, social media is. As for the community policing portion of it, you know, there may be a benefit to that, but I sit on the Port Stanley Community Police Committee, and those particular actions are not what that committee does. It's a just, it's a group of volunteers, and they're sort of working with the OPP to sort of design things or come up with programs to do things as opposed to actually being the vigilant sort of bylaw-type officer. So I would hesitate to put those types of volunteers in a position like that in any other part of the municipality.
Yes, usually the, the community policing groups bring recommendations to us, such as crosswalks or things that they think would improve the safety of their community. Mr. Leach?
One, one other thing staff can do is reach out to the OPP if, if there's certain times of the week that are particularly bad, or just in general, ask the OPP to include a patrol through, you know, that neighborhood, that park area, if there are, are concerns.
It's probably the best thing, at least to start with, is, yeah. Are there, is there signage? I'm assuming there's signage in the park saying that it's dusted on, et cetera? Or not dusted on, dawn to dusk?
I think they put signs up last week, a couple, I think on last, maybe it was even on Monday or Tuesday.
We'll take your, your concerns seriously, Counselor Fair, and as Deputy Mayor Marks agreed with you, and we'll see, we'll let staff see if consulting the police and having some patrols go through at what would be considered the, you know, the, the prime times for contravention, contraventions, such as after 10:00, even after 9:30 nowadays, but we'll see if that will improve at all, and we'll get the, the thing explained again, who you call, what process you use if there's a concern, depending on whether it's noise, which is certainly OPP-controlled.
Thank you.
Anything else under new business?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Baron.
Just to make council aware of one topic, we received an email from some of the marina operators in Port Stanley concerned about a large submerged tree upstream of Kettle, sorry, the King George VI Lift Bridge. Just to make council aware, that is in Kettle Creek. It's actually Crown's land, it's not owned by the municipality, it's actually owned by the Crown. We did some dredging work in that downstream where the submerged tree is, in order to facilitate marine traffic for the bridge reconstruction. We have marked the submerged tree, but there is a, some interest in what the municipality is prepared to do with that submerged tree. It's, it's very, fairly large. We've gone down with our rescue boat, as well as we engage the services of a, a private company to, to see if we can't hook onto the thing and try to drag it out of there, but at this point, that's not possible. So our recommendation to council is that we leave it in place, we continue to make sure it's, it's marked, buoyed as a hazard of navigation, and people stay clear of it. Once the county moves from the westerly leaf to the easterly leaf, this tree will be out of play, so to speak, because there'll be no reason for vessels to go to that, that side of the creek. In order for us to, to remove it, if, if council did want to go onto the Crown waterway, we would suggest it's probably in the order of magnitude of $40,000 to $50,000, because we'd actually have to mobilize a contractor with a barge and an excavator to be able to get up there and hook it out. So at this point, we would recommend you just leave it in place, and we'll monitor it to make sure it's marked for hazard of navigation. That wouldn't be the municipality's responsibility either, but we're prepared to recommend to council that it's, it's a good idea, and we'll wait till spring to see if it gets dislodge with the spring breakup. So it's downstream, we're in an area where we can actually work from land with an excavator to get it out.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Counselor Rowe?
Just, Mr. Baron, for a point of clarity, is that, are we talking the, the sort of north of the lift bridge, south of Kettle Creek Marina, that area?
Correct.
Or north of there?
No. That's, that's the area, just immediately adjacent to the Kiwanis Park. So municipal ownership of the waterway commences at the lift bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else under new business? If not, motions move into closed?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Councilor Krebitz, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council proceed into closed session at 2:45 PM in order to address the matter pertaining to closed session minutes and Earth appointment.
Thank you. We'll take a pause for a moment while we go off live stream.